Accurately tonight, we'll be doing a special session. And then immediately following, we'll be doing our special session and we won't have any breaks in between. So you'll be seeing some repetition of what we do at the beginning of the meeting, like the Pledge of Allegiance, et cetera. This special session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people. And we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/assembly. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item 3.1 is curriculum-related field trip fees. In accordance with the pupil fee law found in Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot 38, before the initiation of any fee not authorized or prohibited by Sections 123B 36 and 123B 37, the school board must hold a public hearing. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing about field trip requests for students of Rochester Public Schools where student fees will be charged. The new field trip requests which we are bringing forward to the public hearing are described in the agenda item. The attachments provide information about these field trips. Extended enrichment field trip for John Marshall Symphonic Strings and Winds to Eau Claire Duluth Minneapolis locations. An increase in collection of student fees for the Century Panther Band's Disney World Parade. The attachment "School Board Approved Enrichment Field Trips 2024-206" lists all the field trips where school board approval for a fee has already been obtained. If there are any members of the public who wish to make public comments on any of the field trip requests on the agenda, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once you are recognized by the Board Chair, please come to the table. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You will have three minutes to speak and the timer will be displayed on the screen below me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name, your relationship to Rochester Public Schools, and the field trip you will be commenting on. Are there any comments on the field trip fees? Are there any comments on the field trip fees? Are there any comments on the field trip fees? Seeing no requests for comments and no additional business, the special session is adjourned at 5:33 PM. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:34 PM on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all PRPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people. And we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. If you are speaking or presenting at tonight's meeting, please speak directly into or close to the microphone provided so that the recording can capture clear audio and the audience present can hear what is being said. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/linbilly. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? The agenda has been approved. There are no comments to the board this evening. So item 4.1 is the Minnesota MTSS Grant, which is an information item. Superintendent Pecel?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to ask our Coordinator of Tiered Supports Jill Dunn to come on up. This is a brief item and something that you will be hearing much more about later in the year. But as board members are well aware, surrounding students with a multi-tiered system of supports in core academic areas, particularly reading and math, as well as in mental health and social emotional well-being is a key component of our strategic plan. And thanks to Jill's leadership, we got some recent good news in a highly competitive grant from the state of Minnesota that we're going to ask you later in the board meeting to approve, proceed of, and the consent agenda. I will just say that off the top of my head, in addition to this very competitive support that we've received, in the brief life of our strategic plan, we've also received support from the state for Grow Your Own Programming for Teachers of Color, Grow Your Own Programming for Special Education Teachers, Literacy Professional Development at the elementary level, early childhood level, middle school level, high school level, systematic project management of our strategic plan, and foundation support nationally for deeper learning. And so I think all of these, besides providing us with necessary resources, are votes of confidence in the agenda. And so Jill is here to give you an update on the latest installment of that journey. Hey, there we go.
All right. Good evening, Chair Nathan, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Pecel. As Director, Dr. Pecel said, I am Jill Dunn and I am the Coordinator of Tiered Supports for the district. And I am very pleased to tell you tonight that we were awarded the Minnesota MTSS Grant from the Minnesota Department of Education. So we will be the recipient of approximately $340,000 over the course of a two-year period. And the funds from this grant will really allow us to continue to build our internal capacity for high-level implementation of MTSS across the district. This is getting louder. Some of the specific activities included include an MTSS facilitator position. So that will be a district-wide position that will support the coordination work. And the individual in this role will be providing onsite coaching and technical assistance to our building site teams, specifically focusing on sustaining effective tier, our teaming structures at the building level. In addition to the facilitator position, then we also have participation in the professional development cohorts. So we have those that will be offered for our central office staff as well as for our building site teams. And we are looking to get at least four buildings per year participating, if not even more. So we are happy to add more if we have more than four buildings per year interested. And there will be substitute costs included as part of this grant, so we'll be able to cover some other cost of those subs. So in conclusion, I'm really excited and thrilled that we are able to be awarded this. And I really look forward to the next phase of implementation of this work and moving it forward. And I look forward to sustaining our partnership and growing our partnership with the Minnesota Department of Ed.
Okay, any board members, any questions? Superintendent? Oh, Dr. Cook.
Is the position that's outlined there and the activities that are outlined, the MTSS facilitator and the professional development, are those things that were planned anyway, or are these things that will be done?
These are in addition to.
In addition.
So they were not originally part of our initial plan. These are an expansion of the original plan. So the grant is affording us the ability to expand our activities around implementation.
And is a position like the MTSS facilitator something that is anticipated to be necessary beyond two years?
So the funding is for two years, so we'll start with that. And then we'll see kind of where we're at and if we have the ability to sustain that and if there's a need to sustain that. I think it's just going to kind of depend on the pace of each building and how quickly we develop our processes and move forward. And so I can't speak really beyond two years, but as of right now, we're starting with two years.
Well, congratulations to you and your team. One of the, one of the things that I've heard just as a parent, so sort of anecdotally, about our tiered supports is how desirable it is to have some coherency district-wide and what really works well for specific evidence-based interventions in response to specific identified needs that we'll be getting through our more robust screening data. So I just think it's incredibly impactful work and congrats to you and your team on identifying the resources to level it up even more. And thank you.
Nobody else? Jill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to your next update. Item 4.2 is recognitions. National School Counseling Week. February 5th through 9th is National School Counseling Week, which focuses attention on the unique contribution of school counselors. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. School counselors work with all students to remove barriers to learning by helping students apply academic achievement strategies, manage emotions, build interpersonal skills, support mental health needs, and plan for post-secondary options. In RPS, our counselors are leading the way in implementing both the post-secondary pathways and the mental health components of our strategic plan. And they have an important role to play in our multi-tiered systems of supports and family engagement work as well. Thank you to our Rochester Public Schools' school counselors for your commitment to getting all of our students what they need to be healthy and successful. Item 4.3 is board member committee updates. We'll start with any updates from committees. Karen?
The Legislative Committee met with Superintendent Pecel and our local, some of our local legislative leaders on Sunday and had a great discussion about the legislative platform that we approved at a recent meeting. Got some good feedback, good dialogue about their thoughts on the upcoming legislative session. And we will keep the board updated as that progresses. The session starts next Monday.
Dr. Marvin?
I just want to be sure. Do we have a student school board representative present? Okay, I thought that person wouldn't be able to come, but I'm just wondering if he's hiding under a chair. Apparently not.
So if there's no other committee reports, we said we were going to bring some information back from the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference that we attended in January of this year. Does anybody want to start with any observations or anything about a workshop that they attended? Director Marvin?
Let me do that. One of the sessions I went to was about artificial intelligence specifically in education. And this is an area that both fascinates me and terrifies me. As you know, AI means that machines can learn from experiences, can they, they can adjust to new input. Students pick up on this very quickly. They can answer questions, they can create essays. And, and there's tremendous, tremendous potential, I think, in what AI can do. There's also some peril, however, and the law firm actually that presented this was talking about that in particular. You know, the ability to plagiarize, the ability to cheat on tests. So I think it has never been as well as the ability to do some really, really important things quickly and effectively. But I think it has never been more important than it is now that our focus is on deeper learning, not just ensuring that kids can come up with answers quickly, but that they understand that they're learning how to learn, that they're doing the kind of analysis, the kind of thoughtful, thoughtful dive into material and creating their own products, problem-solving on their own with the help of technology. But that they can also, and I think this is hugely important, recognize the difference between something which appears online, which is a hoax, and something which is factual. We have really smart kids and I think that they're going to do well with this. But it is going to, it suggests at least that there's going to be some significant differences in the way we teach and in the way we learn.
Chair Dr. Workman?
So Dr. Marvin and I went to the same session on artificial intelligence, as well as the keynote speaker who spoke at length about his experiences growing up and working with computers and the kinds of things they do now. I think I've been kind of trying to put it into perspective into my head where this is all new and it's really exciting. And whenever we have anything new, it's like we're afraid of it. So I'm thinking about, I wonder what it was, what it was like back in the day when electricity was first available in people's homes. You know, they had to learn how to use it so it wouldn't kill them. You know, don't stick the fork in the outlet. It's good advice. Still is. You know, things like that. So I'm looking at it as this could be a huge tool for teachers as they're moving forward in terms of the development of lesson plans, individualizing student learning where they need help. And it will help them, I think, become, be able to become more efficient with the use of their time, which would hopefully then free them up for the deeper learning that students need to engage in. Because Dr. Marvin very wisely said that, you know, how do you tell what's a hoax? And teachers need to be trained in how do you tell what a hoax is? You have to go back to your primary sources rather than just, here it is in front of me. It's on the internet. It must be true. So I'm seeing it as just potentially a huge boon to education. And honestly, I think this district can really be the leader in a lot of the innovation that we can do with technology because our staff is very creative and very innovative. And I think it's going to be some exciting times ahead.
Dr. McLaughlin?
I wanted to comment on that same keynote speaker because I think it was just really engaging. And also the idea, kind of tagging on what Dr. Marvin and Vice Chair Workman talked about, is it's talking, the speakers were talking about modernizing education through the use of AI and computer science and also recognizing from their perspective, and I definitely agree that this is the trend that we're going, is that modernizing our computer science curriculum will open the avenues to all of our students, not necessarily students who want to pursue a career in that, but students that need those skills to understand the AI for all of their future, you know, employment or educational opportunities. So I think it's really an exciting time for us. And the speakers talked about it being a global movement to include AI and computer science in our K-12 curriculum. And like Director Workman said, I think it's something that is definitely a trend in education. It's something that I think we could definitely implement here and I'm excited to see how we can do that.
Dr. Barlow?
Relax, I'm not going to comment on AI. I did find one workshop I attended quite interesting. It was entitled "Recent Updates and Best Practices Related to Working with Law Enforcement Officials in the School Environment." And the workshop itself was really in response to the reaction or overreaction that many districts statewide had undertaken when the state attorney general had rendered an opinion. And the attorney who presented didn't necessarily clarify information, but just provided an overview of the law and allowed districts' school board members to see the value, benefit, and to assess and evaluate for those districts such as ours who has a memorandum of understanding to just ensure that it's current and it's reflective of the needs of the community and the desires of the board.
Dr. Garcia?
Yes, I went to a couple of the same ones, but I will talk about a workshop that I went to called "Students at the Board Table." I had considered, like, might we want to do that for ourselves? So I showed up to see kind of what it would look like if we were to include a student, not just have a student school board, but actually physically a student at the table and may help make decisions. There were Farmington, Minneapolis, and Shakbe School District students. And I thought they were an incredibly diverse and impressive group. And I just wanted to share my favorite quote. One of them, like, looking the, looking the facilitator right in the eye, said, "You're not, you're not all as young as you think you are." And so the decisions you're making about us are about your high school years 30, 40, 50 years ago. So I appreciated that because I thought that was true and I sort of, you know, took stock. Like, I was probably the youngest school board member in the room and my 20th high school reunion is this year. So perspective about how far removed we are from the decisions we're making for kids growing up with AI being in their back pocket and it being completely new and, you know, unwieldy to us. So whatever that would mean for us, I do appreciate, Jean, when you bring the students. That was one of my favorite parts. I love when the students come and kind of share their update. But just sort of food for thought about what it might look like to actually have a student sitting at the school board helping us make decisions that are absolutely going to affect them, even though they're not a voting member.
Dr. Workman?
I'd like to just comment for a minute. I'm past my 20th high school reunion a little bit.
Well, actually, you and I were in that generation when they were just inventing electricity.
Don't put the fork in it.
Don't stick a fork in it. We'll stick a fork in the conversation, though. And I think it's really critically important that all of us maintain that regardless of how long it's been since we've been out of school because we're not preparing kids to go backwards. You know, the days of chalkboard and chalk and students lined up in desks in rows, that time is gone. At that time, it was what was necessary for that time, but we don't live in that time anymore. And what I think is so interesting about all of the technology is that change happens so fast compared to when we were inventing electricity or first learning about it or experiencing it. You know, things have really changed. So I hope that, I know all of my board members keep that in mind of, well, maybe the good old days were fine, but, you know, we're not up here to make decisions about the good old days. But what can we do for our students to have them be prepared for life? That's going to be changing very rapidly all the time.
So I know we've been talking a lot about literacy, but at the Minnesota Department of Education, they are already moving on to the next big implementation of standards, which is math. So the Minnesota math standards were released in 2022 and they will first be tested on in the MCAs in 2028. So between now and 2028, we're going to be seeing the implementation of new math standards similar to what we're going to be seeing in social studies and what we're seeing in literacy in the REACT. So the MDE Math Academic Standards Specialist, Sarah Vanderwerf, who is probably one of the most energetic people I've ever seen, talked about math for an hour and I would go be in her math class in a minute. But she focused her presentations on five key questions to ask your district about math standards, instruction, and assessment. And it kind of gave a great preview about the key questions and areas that the work of the implementation of the math standards are going to involve. So it's what is our definition of math? And for her, the definition of math was math is the study of patterns. And she showed some examples about how, you know, a lot of the basis of how we measure successful schools and districts are on the proficiency of MCAs. But in math, oftentimes that proficiency score is just a measurement of how well kids memorize and perform rote tasks. And the math of now and the math of the future is going to need more creative uses of math. So that's why she introduced a whole set of how you converted what you thought was just a standard calculation of a formula into a recognition of patterns. So that was really interesting. The second piece is do all of our students have access to rigorous math? And rigor, in her definition, is having a conceptual understanding, having the skills and procedures to actually do calculations and formulas, and then a real-world application, an understanding of the real-world application of math. That's definitely a move away from the rote and the memorization of formulas and times tables that math has been rooted in in the past. And then the rigorous, ensuring that we have rigorous math, at least for the development of these new math standards, is going to be rooted in what curriculum we choose and more importantly, the professional development that's done with the teachers on the curriculum. The third piece that she asked us to look to is who is on your district math team? MDE is going to be asking each district to put together a math team for the implementation of the standards. And she talked a little bit about the importance of different kind of skill areas to have on the district math team. What math will our students need in 2040? So we're writing these standards in 2022, but with a look ahead to what they'll need in 2040 by the time they move through our system and then graduate into a, into a career. And how and where are there some creative and new areas of math support? There is almost an entire industry out there on the internet and teachers who have gone and developed YouTube videos or TikTok videos about different ways to approach math that are really enticing and interesting to kids. And how can those be integrated into, you know, the standard curriculum to support math development? So it was just a really, there, she, she had 168 pages of resources to show what MDE is doing and what the foundational basis of how they're thinking about math. So it'll be really interesting once it gets to our shores to actually implement. But there's a lot of, I think the one lesson it showed me is in all of these implementations, no matter what the subject area is, there is a no matter what the subject area is, there is a lot of thought that happens at the state level before it even gets to the decision-making that we have to happen. So it'll be interesting to see once it gets to math. Anything else, board members, on committee reports? All right. The next item is 5.1 through 5.4, our consent agenda. Would any board member, like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is a focus topic, early childhood services update and TS Gold data trends. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you very much. I see Erica Schumacher, our Director of Early Childhood Education, coming on up. And while she gets settled, I also see Melissa Nelson, who leads a lot of our work with early childhood special education. So thank you for being here. There may be some questions that will be asking you to pop up, and thank you for your work. It's interesting, as I think Dr. Marvin started it, talking about artificial intelligence and other board members commented on changes in education. And those certainly are paradigm shifts that are gigantic. But sometimes change is as dramatic, though not quite as sexy, as AI. And I think there's no area in my career in education in which that's happened more than early childhood education. In the span of time, decades that I've been working in the field, we have seen a complete and entire paradigm shift in how we think about educating young children. It was something that, if it happened at all, it happened with limited and episodic funding streams in a few targeted programs. And fortunately, a handful of brilliant economists, in particular James Heckman at the University of Chicago, who went on to win a Nobel Prize for it, decided that we actually ought to study what happened to the handful of young children in the 1960s and 70s who participated in rich, high-quality early childhood education. And while it was entirely not understood at the time, what they found was that the gains were quite extraordinary and that they persisted, not uniformly, but years after the students had been in those programs. And then, along the way, here in Minnesota, Art Rolnik, who was then head of research at the Minneapolis Federal Reserve, had the ingenious idea of taking Heckman's research and doing a cost-benefit analysis and saying if these little kids who participated in these, by comparison, expensive early childhood programs, but by comparison to life outcomes as measured by earnings or incarceration rates if kids ended up going to jail or public assistance rates, they were incredibly effective economic engines and famously found a $16 to one return on investment for high-quality early childhood programming. So those studies really prompted a sea change. And what we've seen in Minnesota and nationally is the, I think, beginnings of a dramatic systematizing of early childhood education. Unfortunately, it's still in the beginnings. We don't have the funding or the resources that we need and ought to have, and I know want, to make the kind of high-quality early childhood education available to all students, in particular kids who are growing up in poverty and who face other challenges to educational success. But it's important to take stock. In the last 30 decades, we have made a dramatic, dramatic shift as a field. And I was very pleased when I got to Rochester two and a half years ago to find out that the biggest challenge we face in our early childhood work is not generally improving the quality of that content. You can always get better, and we do, and Erica will give us a sense of that. But it is more improving the number of students we can serve and access to them. Access in our community being particularly hindered by transportation. To get the families with very young children to our programming, and as you know, we'll be bringing you back a recommendation about repurposing the Pinewood School to further enhance the services that we currently provide. So in talking with board members about the 2024 calendar, we wanted to give board members what really is our first opportunity of a deep dive into our early childhood programming. I've told Erica, please presume, myself included, the need for baselining of our core programming, that we don't take it for granted, that board members have recently had an opportunity to understand exactly where we are. I want to thank Amy Icke, who has been providing the cabinet-level leadership for this work in a really exemplary and systematic way. And I think, as board members know, in recognition not only of the importance of early childhood programming in general, but of Erica's leadership in particular, we recently elevated her position to the director level. And we really know that director position in our district is where the strategic leadership of all of our work happens. So this is the Schumacher Show. But I've asked Erica to really take us through this opportunity to dive in. I know board members will have questions and observations, and of course, this will be a continuing subject of discussion for the board in the years ahead. So Erica, thank you, and let's jump in.
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board. I'm excited to be here and share all that we do. And I will try and do it as comprehensively as possible, but if we need more time in the future, I'd love to invite you to join us in programming, because I think that's where the real magic happens, not watching me talk. So we'll dive in. So the first thing to note is that early childhood in Rochester Public Schools really has two areas of focus. Our Early Childhood Family Services Department, which is our general education programming, and then our Early Childhood Special Education programming. And we work together to provide inclusive programming to the members of our community. So Early Childhood Family Services is a department that oversees four areas. Early Childhood Family Education, also known as PARE, or Parents Are Important in Rochester. And their main focus is to engage families in class together, provide parent education, help families set goals for their children for the future. And we do that through age group classes and some workshop or support group classes. And that also includes community partnerships that we go to, because not everybody we know is comfortable coming into our building. So we want to make sure that we're making ourselves accessible. And then we have Early Childhood Screening. Early Childhood Screening is a way to childfind and get a developmental snapshot on a child aged three to five and provide us with a little bit more information about how they're doing developmentally and whether or not they need additional support. We work in collaboration with some partners as well in district and outside of district to ensure that that's also accessible. And then we have our Family Literacy Program, which is in conjunction with Adult Basic Education, where the adults attend class throughout the day and gain skills in whether that be their GED or their literacy skills. And then we have five classrooms with students ages birth to age five, where we engage them in learning throughout the day, four days a week. And then we partner with Head Start for that programming to ensure that they have all of the resources they need outside of our program or outside of our school day. And then finally, Rochester Public Schools Preschool also falls under this, where we provide classroom experiences for ages three to five in partnership with our special education. All of our classrooms are inclusive, so you'll see lots of different abilities within those rooms. And then we have fee-based and scholarship-based programming within there. And I'll talk a little bit more about each of these. That's why I'm going a little bit quick. Then also, we have partnerships that provide support out in the community and provide seats to children out in this community through our school readiness funding. And we do that through Families First in Minnesota. So I'm going to just share some of our program facts from the previous year. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I am going to highlight some of the things that are important about this. And on this slide, our ECFE program has served, last year, 331 children in our traditional ECFE classes that meet more than two times. So usually that's a session where they come for anywhere between 10 to 12 weeks to engage. Their parents attend with them. They spend time together in a classroom, and then they separate, and the children stay with our early childhood educators, and then the parents go with parent educators. And ECFE was built to support parents and their parenting journey. And so when we see that we're kind of around that 90% mark of parents feeling supported and like they're getting information about how to support their children's skills, that's really where we want to be. Sometimes we have repeat parents who are saying like, "Well, maybe I didn't get it in this particular class," but they still enjoy our experience. And so we feel really strongly about what we're able to offer. This fall alone, we've already served 215 children and 277 adults in those traditional classes. And so we anticipate we'll surpass what we served last year. We've had really strong numbers with waitlists as we've entered this year, which is great to see. One thing I do want to share with you is that we were one of six pilot sites for early childhood family education in the state of Minnesota, and we are turning 50 next year. So we will be celebrating the staff who have built the program and the staff who continue to engage families in our community, as well as the families who participated. And a fun fact is Holmes Elementary was where the grant was written for, which is currently the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, really?
So that's where that building was. That was the attendance area. So we'll be inviting you all to engage with us next year to celebrate 50 years of excellent programming. Oh, this has a picture over it. So our screening facts, I'm glad I brought my computer up. And so we serve children in screening ages three to five. So we try and capture them one time throughout that. Sometimes we have a need for a rescreen where a child maybe isn't super comfortable coming in the first time, or there are some concerns that we just need to take a second look at. Last year, we screened about 1,500 children, which is a great year for us. And our numbers are higher in our threes and fours, which is exactly what we would want to see. We would want to see less children coming in at ages five and six to be screened. And children in the state of Minnesota have, until the first 30 days of kindergarten are up for them to get their early childhood screening. So we're really capturing them on the early end. And then I did look up some trends in state, and we're really a little higher on serving three- and four-year-olds on average, and then lower in that five- and six-year-old range, which is exactly what we would want to see. A couple of things that I do want to highlight that are currently happening. We, in January, moved to online booking for our programming. So you used to have to pick up the phone and call. If we were on the phone, we had to call you back. It was kind of a patsy system, and we know nobody likes to make phone calls anymore. So we now have online booking, and we've seen some pretty great success with families being able to access us that way. And then additionally, we implemented using Talking Points to confirm appointments. So like you go to the dentist and they text you and say, "Can you send us back a C that you confirm you're going to show up for your appointment?" We've done that, and we've also seen a ton of participation with that for families. They can text us back and tell us that they need to reschedule. And that's helpful for us because what used to happen is families would just no-show their appointment. And so we have staff there. Nobody else can take that appointment because we don't have enough time to replace it. So Talking Points has also been wildly helpful for us in this department. Yeah. Okay, getting a little bit better with pictures. So this is our Rochester Family Literacy Program. And last year, we served 41 children and, let me get the number right for you, 28 parents. And like I said before, they come to school together. And so there, there are four days a week, so Monday through Thursday, full days. They come, they can have breakfast together, they participate in the children's classroom together, parents separate and go upstairs to their classes, they come back down midday for lunch. And then we have reading time where parents and children can read together, and then they go back up for their afternoon classes until the end of the day. So this program has some unique qualifications. So we require that the families qualify for free and reduced lunch. In addition, they also have to have a multilingual learning need or a literacy need. And so that helps us really target who gets access to that program and ensures that we're really tackling some early literacy needs that we aim to work on through our program goals. Additionally, there were 67 families who were interested, but we weren't able to serve last year. And what that looks like for us is that we may have a spot open in a four-year-old classroom, but a family with a four-year-old on the waitlist might also have a two-year-old sibling or an infant sibling that we don't have space in those classrooms for. So placing students can kind of be a puzzle in trying to ensure that we get families in and with the best services that they need, and they're not driving all over town. So what we do with that is we work with the family to let them know that we maybe don't have space right now, that we'll keep them on our waitlist. And then we help them find community resources so they can access other programs, so they're not sitting at home waiting for our program. And then our team is really excellent and invested, and they offer lots of ways for families to engage. They access resources for them, so they don't have to leave school to get them. So one thing we do is we do clothing drives. Our parent educator is really great about bringing in things like car seat safety or bike safety, or we'll bring in health professionals to talk about things, different health, things like healthy eating. And then we work in conjunction with ABE, and so they have facilitated Channel One Food Bank to come in. And we know that when families have basic needs met, that they're better able to learn. So having access to food on-site is helpful. And then our Rochester Public Schools Preschool Program. On the general education side, which is all I'll speak about for this slide, is we served 241 children last year as an end-of-the-year number. We had more children who joined and then dropped or transitioned, but 241 was our end number for last year. And we had about 55% of our students access scholarships. So there's school readiness scholarships, which are for children ages three to five, which is a funding stream we get through the state that allows us to serve students for either a low cost or a no cost, depending on the family's needs. So usually, it looks like you pay $20 a month for preschool instead of $400 a month. And then School Readiness Plus is specifically for four- and five-year-olds, and that allows us to serve children with no fee and additionally allows us to provide transportation because it's written into the funding stream. So that's a really popular one for us, is to get students there with transportation, as Dr. Pekel indicated. And we additionally have those additional 37 seats that go out into community preschool sites. We have Listos Good News in the YMCA where students attend. And they have similar use of curriculum and assessment tools because they're a part of our program or an extension of our program that they have to use. And this year so far, we have 213 preschoolers attending. It has fluctuated quite a bit. And one thing that I'll touch on a little bit later, and you'll see in the numbers for our Early Childhood Special Education Program, is we've had a high number of students qualify for services this year. And so one thing is that we do to ensure that students have some consistency, if it meets their need, we ensure that they get to stay in their current classroom as best possible. So we leave some space for students to start attending because we know we childfind. And then they would get to stick with their team if the team meets their needs and have their services delivered in their classroom. So our numbers shift a little bit. We have a great number of preschoolers, but our Gen End Ones kind of shift to the sped side as soon as they qualify for those services. And then here's the data piece of what we get to talk about tonight. So we use Teaching Strategies Gold for our assessment tool. It's often referred to as TS Gold. It is a tool that is approved by MDE. It's one of four under their kindergarten entry profile. And so this tool, we started using in 2013. And so we're really well-versed in using it. It assesses six areas of learning, so social, emotional, cognitive, literacy, physical, and mathematics, and language. And so it's a really pretty comprehensive tool, and I'll dig into that in a little bit here. It's also aligned with our curriculum, so it makes it really easy to use and implement for our staff. It's a big tool to use. I won't lie about that, and it takes some time to learn, but it allows us to really streamline how staff implement learning in the classroom. And then a couple of things to note for when I show you is students are placed on what's called a developmental continuum or a widely-held expectation per their age. So if a student enters as a three-year-old on September 1st, they stay in their three-year-old color band. It's also called a color band. There's lots of names for one little chunk of the tool. They stay on that color band for the entire school year. We don't move them if they change for or change over to four years old. And then the next year, they would be on the four-year-old developmental continuum. It helps us better track their growth in the program. And then what we do with our data is we collect it through observation and apply intentional learning opportunities in In very rare cases, we do it through direct assessment. So that would only happen if a student is absent quite frequently, and we're trying to catch up and make sure that we know where they're at. But very rarely do we sit down and just directly assess, and it would actually still happen in play. It would just be really intentionally done to capture some data on a student. But to tell you a little bit about what collecting data looks like in play, it looks like engaging in play with a child or watching a child engage with their peers, and then taking objective documentation about what's happening with that student. So we have our staff trained in taking that objective documentation. And what that might sound like is if a child was trying to share a toy with somebody else, we would say, and it wasn't going well, I should say that. If they're sharing a toy and it's not going well, the child, we would note that the child maybe had a frown on their face and that that frown was due to the fact that another child wouldn't share a toy with them. What we wouldn't write down in an objective observation is Johnny was angry, because that's subjective. So our staff are trained in really stepping back, pausing, and really making sure that we're not putting bias into our observations of their skills. So I'm going to share with you our data trends from the last five years, and then we'll dive into what this might look like for teachers. So in social-emotional, we have seen a decline, which I don't think would surprise anybody, since the pandemic. Practicing those skills has really been a high need. And we continue to see, even in early childhood, that we are seeing a need to practice social-emotional skills, like managing our feelings, engaging with peers, building trusting relationships, and solving social problems. Interestingly enough, our physical data says, which is fine in gross motor skills, our students are doing pretty well, right? We can grasp onto things, we can kick a ball, we can balance our bodies. So we're seeing that that specific area of development is still doing well. Cognitive data looks at whether or not a child can attend and engage, persist on tasks, whether they use flexibility in their thinking, and if they use representation to think symbolically in play. And so we see that they're still doing really well in this area over time. Some of that takes practice, some of that takes the social skills that we saw to be able to navigate that kind of play with peers. But we work really hard to help students kind of lean towards the skills that would help them engage later on in deep learning as well outside of preschool programming. In language, our trend looks a little bit like it's going down and it's starting to come back up. I think one interesting correlation is we're seeing a lot of speech and language referrals coming into special education. And so we're kind of in this cohort of group that was here throughout the pandemic, maybe had less access to hearing other people speak outside of their home, which is really helpful in building some of that, right? And a point I'll hit on here soon when we look at data in a classroom is telling stories about something or engaging in conversations might look different if your parent's been watching you all day versus somebody who hasn't seen something you've done. And you get to be excited about telling them that experience. And so some of those skills are really honed when you get to have peer-to-peer interaction. And then here's our literacy data. We had a slight dip in 2020, 2021 school year, but we're in about the mid-80s typically. And we were one of the recipients of the Read Act grant that we received. And so our staff are currently in letters training and working on building upon their capacity to deliver in this area. And I have all the confidence that with what they're currently doing, we'll see these scores rise. And then the last one is mathematics. So I'm really excited to hear the update that Chair Nathan gave because it's really important, and we see that we have a need to work on this. Mathematics skills are skills that we need to directly teach and also build into play situations, but they do need some guidance and some thought. And so it doesn't surprise me that this kind of mimics our social-emotional data because that's all in play too. And so when we build everything into play, it doesn't surprise me that we might see some more turn-taking things happening where we're not maybe directly focused on those math things. This is one area where we're able to provide staff with additional learning. So what do we do with this data? From the program level where I'm concerned, we are really looking at how to plan professional development for staff. So when we look at mathematics, we build in math PD or math opportunities for them to engage in and think about how can I better embed this into our students' days. I provide state feedback, so we receive funding for the School Readiness Scholarships. So we have to provide our data back to the state to better support the funding streams that are coming through to continue to show that it does have an impact and that we are making a difference. One thing I'll note is the state has not, they switched their data system for early childhood, and so we have not received any information back about how we're doing in comparison to other districts for a few years. They're still working through that data. I have asked some questions about it, and I'm hoping to get some more information that I'd be happy to share back. But that look, that specific measuring impact report that they do has not been available for a few years. And then it also informs how we, well, I just said that compared to other communities, that'll come. And then what resources can we share with families through newsletters and our quarterly catalog that we send out? So we know that parents are the first and most important educators in a child's life, and so we want to make sure that we're not just holding information, but we're also sharing information about how this can be embedded at home. And then on the classroom level, we have staff utilizing the data on a regular basis. They can put it into our Teaching Strategies Gold system. It spits out reports really quickly, so they can really accurately see where students are at. And then it helps them to further plan as they go forward in making sure that their students are meeting their goals. And then it informs what resources they also share with parents. So our teachers are really skilled and really on top of sending information home to families to make sure that they are also not just holding valuable information that could be implemented. So I'm just going to share what this might look like if we were to look at a sample from this fall from a student set, dataset, in one classroom. So this is a classroom of four-year-olds. And if the teacher were to go in and look at this report, they could see where their students are doing collectively. So that blue bar is they're below their expectations, below their developmental age. And the purple is they're meeting their expectations. And in this class, there are no children currently exceeding their expectations, but we usually see that by the end of the year that students exceed. So if we take a look at this, we can see that social-emotional data and language data is showing that we have some room for growth. They're the two top areas where we maybe need to support students in. So if we break that down and look at this in terms of numbers and where students are sitting, we can break this down and see where exactly they are within the color band, how many students that is. This teacher would be able to identify the particular student and then make some decisions. I pulled out some information regarding 10-point A, which engages in conversations. So there's four students or five students currently below their widely-held expectation, which is that six block is where it starts, where 10 students are. So if we were to look at what skills a student needs to meet that six, they would need to engage in a conversation that has three returns. They would need to stay on topic the entire time. And they would need to ask questions or repeat information to keep the conversation going. That would get them to that very first base level of what they need to be doing to be considered engaging in conversations as a four-year-old. So it's quite a lot of skills that they have to have in place in order to meet that developmental level. So the teacher could facilitate some opportunities and some practice around that for students who are not currently meeting that.
If I could just interject there, Erica. Imagine being a kindergartner or first-grade teacher and the difference between a student who walks into your class who has those discreet but really foundational skills and one who doesn't. It's almost night-and-day difference in terms of your ability then to build on the learning. So those are just absolutely foundational skills. And if you look and you say, well, there's three kids who don't have it, well, that's diagnosing in a very small set. Three kids who, absent intervention, are going to have deep trouble accessing fundamental content because of what we used to call those soft skills. But they're just absolutely foundational at that age. And as a former high school teacher, they're foundational with teenagers too.
Yeah. There are so many of them who struggle with that, right?
Right.
Absolutely. And the other thing I'll note with this is we get questions all of the time about the length of the color band and why some are shorter and some are longer. And to me, it was the opposite of what I would have thought it would have been. The shorter color bands are the color bands where you actually have to spend a lot more time in practice in those skills. So you would spend a lot more time at a six and then move up to kind of some of what the seven skill might be, but you spend a lot more time in the short color bands. And then when they're longer, like nine D that has four, is what happens is usually once a child gets that first precursor skill, they start to quickly move through all of the rest of the skills. It kind of clicks and they move through them quicker, which is why it's a little bit longer. Okay, I'm going to jump into our special education information, and I'll just touch lightly on this because we have Melissa here, and she's an expert. So our Birth to Three are our Part C services in the district. Serve children that are age birth to three, pretty self-explanatory. And that service is provided typically through a home visit that is based upon what the family's goals are for their child. So if a family indicated they were interested in support around feeding their child, that's what that home visitor would do. And they would continue to build in some of the other skills that may have been missing when that child qualified for an individual family service plan. This program coordinates with lots of people in the community, including our district ECFE programming, to ensure that families have access to practice skills. And currently, they have 147 students and 72 students in evaluation. So it's a pretty good number for our Birth to Three. And then our three-to-five-year-olds, which are our Part B services, are provided through many locations in the community through partnership as well as our inclusive classrooms within the school district. And they currently serve 430 students ages three to five. And they have 97 students in referral or in evaluation right now. So they're seeing really high numbers. And that's what this chart here will tell you is some trend over time since 2020, 2021 to now. We know that we are already well on our way to surpass what happened last year or what we saw last year in terms of evaluations. There are currently 508 students. And as you can see, 730 was the number last year. So I think we'll surpass that with the number of children that are on the eval list. And this last month, I know this from my friend Melissa, that they have seen the highest number of referrals in the month of January historically. So we're seeing a trend where we need to support children in different ways. And so conversations we have are, what are some of the missing skills that we're seeing early on? And how do we work together and through community partnership to try and ensure that families have access to practice those skills, whether they're receiving services or not?
I would just interject, sorry I keep doing this, Erica. But this is an issue of surpassing importance for Rochester Public Schools. As board members know, we have seen a significant increase in our percentage of students with disabilities in the district as a whole in recent years. And that's one reason why we're investing so heavily in the multi-tiered system of support work that Jill talked about at the beginning, so we are sure that we're not identifying kids who are struggling for academic or other reasons as qualifying for special education services. But these are very, very young kids who are coming to us absent years of progress through school, and we are quite carefully diagnosing these higher rates of autism and other disabilities. And it's something that, to my knowledge, is not unique to Rochester, but nobody's sure exactly why. In the early days of some of this, there was a sense, well, are we just identifying better? The kids used to move through the system. There does seem to be reasonably, there actually is increased incidence of these disabilities in the population. And so why that is is one issue, but as Erica's saying, the opportunity to serve these students. But it's a trend that I know we were already watching in the aggregate, but I have to say, in looking at these early childhood numbers, there are some striking increases. And if you go out to Mighty Oaks or Hoover and you talk to our teachers, they are seeing it in practice as well. And you have to be careful to kind of go and hypothesize why this might be, but to the extent that the pandemic had some families during the very formative years of infant development or very young child development not engaging or able to engage in the ways that might have historically been the case, that may be a factor. But it's something that I'm glad that you've included these numbers. It's a really important thing for us to continue being attentive to.
Yeah, I think it's really important. And I think that one thing we know in early childhood is that early intervention does make a dramatic difference in a child's educational future. And so while these are high, we're good, we're happy. We're really happy that child find us working and that we can support children who have needs that need a little additional support, and their families as well, and how to support them and get them connected to resources. So it's striking, but it's okay because we know that we can provide some really great things. So I'll touch just briefly on a few challenges in early childhood that Dr. Fakel already shared a little bit about. Funding is one thing. Funding is, we have some great funding streams and the state is catching up to supporting children. Last year, they showed a great show of faith in early childhood in the state of Minnesota by putting a lot of money towards early childhood. But there is room to grow always in that area. When we talk about our School Readiness Plus funding that we receive, those seats are only reimbursed up to 0.6 ADM, depending on the number of hours a child attends, whether it's half-day or full-day. Additionally, that transportation funding that comes with, that is fantastic. But then there's a whole other slew of preschoolers who need access to transportation that aren't prioritized, even though they meet similar qualifications for scholarships. Transportation, again, that next one, it is a barrier to accessing preschool programming. And it's a lot of work by nature. Young children are hand-to-hand transport. So when we have them on the van, we have to hold their hand and then hand them off to a parent or a caregiver. And same, and then buckling, it may have been a while since anybody's buckled a small child in, but that takes some time, especially when they don't want to go home. So there is some time built into that, which adds extra cost too. And that is one reason why we are looking at the location of Mighty Oaks and trying to be closer to where families may have access to provide transportation or maybe within a walking zone. We know right now, one thing about Mighty Oaks is that it's not anywhere near a bus line. The closest bus line stops about a mile away from the school. So even if a family was willing to take a bus, like we have families who do that at Hoover, who are willing to hop bus lines to get their children there, they would still have to walk a mile to get to school and on roads that don't have sidewalks. So being closer into town should help with some of those issues. And then space, we continue to grow, we continue to see a need to serve students. And we are looking at what that might look like. And with Pinewood, that would give us five additional classrooms, which could mean, depending on if it was a half-day or full-day programming, we could serve an additional 80 to 160 students in that space that we don't currently have classroom space for at Mighty Oaks. And finally, with this cute little one, what Dr. Fakel touched on earlier, there is a current report that just came out from the Department of Health and Human Services around early care and education. And what they shared is that there is a high impact that happens when children engage in early childhood education, and it continues most definitely through their kindergarten year. But it had an interesting fact that it depends upon the quality of their later education as well and whether or not that is built upon or if it's counteracted. And if it's built upon, it can last through their high school years, which is really empowering. And I think our district is doing a really great job at setting students up for success in a lot of different ways. So I feel really confident when we launch our preschoolers into their next step, that they are gaining access to. that they are, they are gaining access to. But, and, and not counteracting what we've already worked to build. With that, questions?
Board members, Dr. Cook.
For the early childhood screening, do we have a, I, I think I recall, but maybe correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we want kids to be screened before they start kindergarten, right? And that, and we can enforce that or require that. What about for children that don't attend school in the district? They're homeschooled or they go to a private school? Do we have a sense of whether we are screening those children?
That's a really great question. I'll have to look into what that number looks like for us. Although they, we don't ask super clearly where they're attending. We try and get that information from families so that way we can help guide if we're seeing some things where they're going. But I could, I could look that up.
And lots of families may not know at the time that they're being screened.
Yeah, absolutely. It would still be a requirement for private school students. But I'll have to check on that homeschooling piece. That's a great question.
Thanks.
Dr. Garcia?
I have sort of a numbers question. So you've given us a lot of data about, obviously, there's a trend and an increase in those that are being screened and going through the assessments. Is, do we have the capacity, like the funding and the staffing for all of that? Or are we looking for like more referrals and hoping to get more kids in the door?
In terms of special education or early childhood screening?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
Both, okay, yeah. In terms of early childhood screening, we're doing really well staffing-wise. I think one thing that's really interesting that we're watching closely is, once a student is in evaluation and qualifies for services, that child no longer has to go through early childhood screening because they've had a really deep assessment of their skills. And so as we see the number grow, when that birth to three population, we don't, we do not have to screen them. And so we're trying to just track and make sure that we're not missing part of the population who maybe doesn't have that. So we're seeing a need for evaluation staff to have the capacity to be able to do their jobs. On the screening side, we're, we're sitting pretty comfortably right now. And then in terms of the funding, the state just actually in like the last year has added money to the reimbursement for per age, per screen. So that way, we, we're in a much more comfortable spot where we should be able to cover costs.
That's good. Because I think like in the mental health world, the people who can do like psychological assessments for littles or do even like a DC zero to five, like this, like this big. So that's great. I also am wondering, this is perhaps more common. I really appreciate how you include the family. And it seems like it would make great sense, obviously, such young children, that you would include their caregivers. And it makes me think about, you know, one of the things that we often look at for like emotion regulation is we often say, like, the higher your SES, like probably the better off you are able to emotionally regulate. And there's also additional research that's showing like for stu, for children whose parents are capable of better emotion regulation, they have the opportunity then perhaps to, you know, for upward mobility, like for their socioeconomic status to increase as they get older and they're looking for jobs. And so when I'm looking at some of the like social emotional data, the fact that you're giving families resources is so helpful because I think the, the impact particularly of COVID is that all of us, even as adults, are also struggling with our own mental health. And so how can we support the use of effective skills in, in children? So even though we're teaching in the classroom, the skills to children, being able to support parents and, and helping them with those skills as well is helpful. Because I think that's hard and like more of an outpatient or even an inpatient setting to have that sort of work done where we're like, we're teaching the kid the skill, but then they're going into an invalidating environment or an environment that's not set up to support the use of those skills. So I think that's excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think that's a really great point. And we work really hard to support parents. Parenting is a really hard job. I had to talk my personal child out of a box this morning because she wanted to be mailed to Disneyland. And she didn't want to go to school because she wanted to go to Disneyland. And so, right, like that's not how I thought I'd start my day. But I got to talk a child out of a box this morning. But it's a hard job. And I think what Elmo, of all people, found out this, last week by putting it out on Twitter is that adults are struggling. And so as much validation and support as we can give along with education to the work that parents and caregivers are doing is really, really valuable and important.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Mur?
Two things. First of all, just take your kid to Disney World. I mean, just do that. Secondly, I appreciate the information you provided on TS Gold. I have a much clearer picture of what it is, and it's a lot.
It's a lot.
And six different areas. Do kindergarten teachers do the screening?
For teaching strategies gold?
In the, yeah, for TS Gold.
No. Only used in early childhood right now.
So that's before, okay. But the, the preschool teachers do that while the kids are in?
In class.
Class. And how, how often over the course of a year does that?
So we finalize our data two times a year. We have fall data and spring data. But they are collecting data every day on these skills. And so it's 52 objectives. And each, each objective, like I kind of highlighted, that engages in conversation, has very specific things that you're looking for, depending on which area you're looking at. So our teachers are pretty fabulous and they work really hard to get a really good developmental picture of where students are at.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
My brilliant experience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Bartlett?
Well, I'd like to, first of all, share something that I think is very important. Erica, first, excellent presentation. And, you know, Erica is a product of Rochester Public Schools. And there, there may be teachers here who taught her. And this is a moment where the district should be proud of seeing one of our own excel and see how she is shaping the future of the next generation of students and/or teachers who will serve and/or attend this district. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Now body buttered you up. No, no, no hard questions here. I, too, appreciated the information relative to TS Gold. And it reaffirmed in my mind the direction we're headed in as a district social emotional learning, to see the direct correlation between one's social emotion behavior, even as a young child, and how that then affects other educational or learning domains. So thanks for being able to, that you're utilizing this tool. And I see a great value in it. Final question deals with the developmental continuum and whether or not that is transferable once they actually enter K. Do any of the teachers have any information regarding the students who, is there any information that's transferred related to that same question then is, is there any effort to perhaps develop a cohort, cohort referencing to see how these students do as they progress and continue within the Rochester Public Schools?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So the, one, to answer the first part of that is, is that is where some of our work around EduClima is coming in. We previously used to put our gold data into Skyward, but it was kind of hard to find. And it's, if you're not really familiar, it was kind of clunky to read through and not everybody knew what to make of it. So hopefully with EduClima, we'll be able to have it in a way that teachers are familiar with using with their other systems. And we have done some correlation work in the past. I would say the pandemic quite thwarted a lot of that, that progress. And so it is something that we'll look to do again. And it really just takes time for us to match up what are the skills that we're saying? And what, how do those indicators match up with what, what the expectation might be for K levels? So it, we haven't pulled that in a while, but it is something that is kind of on our brains of how we get that and it, can we use EduClima to help us with some of that trajectory?
Brief point on that?
Sure.
Dr. Bartlett, it's a very perceptive point to make, important. Alignment of early childhood with early elementary has been a struggle in school districts all over the country, partly because, as Erica suggested, it's different funding streams. Sometimes it's very different kinds of people that feel called to work with three-year-olds and five-year-olds and six-year-olds. To further build on that alignment, one of the shifts that I am very strongly exploring and look forward to sharing with board members is, is I mentioned that Amy Icke in the Office of Community Education Partnerships has provided able cabinet-level leadership for our early childhood work. And they're exploring shifting early childhood into a refocused office of academics so that we further build. And Amy's going to get some new exciting responsibilities as part of that deal we're talking about it. But the logic of that, the collaboration is happening already. But when there's only so many hours in the day and there's competing priorities, doing what I think the question implies, which is continuing to use not just data, but teaching strategies, relationships with kids and families across that early childhood kindergarten, first, second grade divide is definitely a next wave for us. It's happening, as Erica indicates now. But I think we can lean into that. It has educational benefits. It also frankly has enrollment benefits. Because when we have families in our early childhood program, we want the opportunity to serve them in our elementary grades. We want to make it very easy for them to continue from one of the programs that Erica leads into one of our elementary schools. So this is something I look forward to talking with the board about in the, in the next couple of months, actually.
Dr. McLaughlin?
I need a reminder about one thing, and then I have a question. The reminder, pandemic, did you remain open the entire time capacity? Can you remind us how that looked?
Yeah, yep. So we did. We followed what the district did. So we had students in. We, we mitigated as many health issues as we could. And then when we were in hybrid, we were, you were in hybrid, we were also in hybrid. So it looked exactly the same. So that 2020, 2021 school year where we were in and out a lot makes a lot of sense in the data because students, young children, were in and out a lot, depending on personal sickness or whether or not the district was in a situation where schools needed to be closed. So.
So tracking the elementary schedule, how about that first quarter when other kids, were you out then, too?
And we were doing.
You were doing online?
Online learning with preschoolers, which was an experience. And it was actually really fun. But it was not, it didn't match up to having students in classrooms with us. But yeah.
Did your capacity change at all during that time? Or did you meet the needs of all the students?
We were able to meet the needs of all the students. A little bit lower enrollment just due to families not knowing and family circumstances. But that shot up the very next school year. So we were back more completely.
Thanks for that little reminder.
Yeah.
And then my other question is about the preschool scholarships. Can you talk about how those are publicized in the community? Are you confident that families in our community are aware of those scholarships?
Yeah, we push it out in a lot of different ways. So it's on all of our marketing materials that scholarships are available. Specifically, the School Readiness Plus scholarships are awarded for certain schools in the district. So we typically amend to serve outside of those schools if we don't get enough children within them. So we receive for Gage, Elton Hills, Franklin and Riverside are the four school sites. And so we push specific marketing to those families to try and get them enrolled. And then we additionally share information through flyers and all sorts of other stuff, letting families know that we have access to scholarships if they need them. And addition, one scholarship source I didn't talk about is we also receive dollars to serve through Pathways funding, which we typically serve a good chunk in the school year, but we reserve a chunk of that to provide summer preschool. So there's no cost for summer preschool for children.
And do you get the sense that it's enough detail that, you know, families at the lowest income levels would know that it's just, you know, the $20 per month? Do you think that there's that level of detail that people understand that?
You know, I think once we get to some of that, I, I don't know that everybody knows that. It's because it's really complex and scholarships are messy in nature. And so we try and give as much information without necessarily promising something before we have the chance to review each individual enrollment that's requesting financial assistance. Oftentimes, what happens is there's a community partner or somebody who works in conjunction with us that does explain that with the family if they're interested, as they're kind of explaining what options we have. But it's tricky. And I think that there's always room for improvement when it comes to communication around those things.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to circle back around. So Erica's a graduate of John Marshall.
Yeah.
And when she was. To be specific, yeah.
Do you know the year?
I don't know the year, but I came to know, Erica, she was playing varsity volleyball when my daughter was on the JV squad. And, and I said, who's that girl over there with the strong serve? And who's knocking the ball across the net like, oh, that's Erica. Everyone knew Erica Schumacher. Way to go Rockets, way to go Erica.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Erica, thank you for all this. I think one of the other pieces that helps your program be so successful is your parent advisory council and how you have developed this feedback loop with the parents that are in your program. And I'll let you talk a little bit about that in a minute. But we were invited by the parent advisory council. We, we've gone to meetings in the past, but then they invited us to come this fall and winter to visit the programs. And I went to visit a pair program at Northrop and then a program at Hoover. And it was, I mean, you don't want to leave. My, I took advantage of pair programs when my youngest was an infant. And it's that same spirit and intent and, and that parent. I think, I think you have really hit the nail on the head in terms of parental support. I think parents, even before a pandemic, needed support. And I think after a pandemic, need it more. So can you talk a little bit about your parent advisory council and how you include some of that feedback in the development of your programming?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a wonderful group of parents and community members who provide feedback to us on a regular basis. They help us plan our events and they help us think about what is it that families need, want? What are we missing? What shifted? So we reach out through our classes and through, it's advertised in our catalog as well that families are welcome to participate on this advisory council. We'll take, we'll take any and all. We don't have a set number. And then our, as I said, our community partners sit in there as well. And so, for example, we are required by the state to hold sliding fee scales for our family education programming. And we cannot deny any family if they say they cannot pay. But setting prices, because we are a business kind of that takes an income, is something we have to do and have to evaluate on a pretty regular basis. So our last meeting, we spent some time talking about what is reasonable to ask families to pay for class. If we raise it by 25 cents, does that feel too much? We know things are tight for, for people as inflation has kind of, you know, put them in a bind. That a family could always say, I can't pay this, but not everybody's willing to say, I can't pay that. And so we had a really great conversation about what does that look like? Are we, are we moving up enough? How does that look? Does this feel comfortable? Do you feel like the people you're connected to would feel comfortable with, with this? Is one way. Additionally, each year when I get into thinking about what programming we'll offer for the following school year, I bring it to them. We talk about what do you want to see that's missing? What, what needs to go away that's no longer relevant, all of those pieces. So we have a pretty good relationship with that group. And as I talked about, you know, being comfortable going into our programs or having the time to come into our traditional ECFE programs can be a challenge for families. We've been able to spark community partnerships through that, through families who are connected to us. So for example, Pomoja Women, Khadijah sits on our, our advisory council has for a long time. And she is saying, you know, I come to class and every time I go home, all of my friends call me and say, what did you learn this week at ECFE? And they can't all make it to class. So when she began her business, we decided to go to her and said, what can we do to connect to the families so you're not having to take all the phone calls, but you can be there to support conversations that feel relevant to the families you serve? And so, so that we kind of organically come across things as well as intentional planning.
Any other comments? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And I hope to see you come anytime you want to play. It's a lot of fun.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Board members, it's about seven o'clock. Would we like to take a break before we go into our next presentation?
I need one.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be in recess until 7:10 PM. Okay. We'll be in recess until 7:10 PM. Update, Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, you can see we have Laura Willis, who is a teacher on special assignment and really in a leadership role coordinating our work of advanced learning services and instructional technology. And Erica Vannevera, who is here, who is a specialist in that area. And, and you and others may have noticed a term, advanced learning. And I am sharing now with this board and an email will go out tomorrow to all staff and parents to explain that that's the term we're going to be using going forward to replace a longstanding term called gifted and talented education. And I want to begin by saying, as the email tomorrow will say, that does not indicate in any way a diminishment of our commitment to provide education to academically highly capable students. In fact, quite the contrary, we want to grow and expand it. But the term gifted and talented is problematic for a number of reasons. And we could spend all night on it, but I will say Laura's had a team of specialists in our district who provide these wonderful services that you're going to get an update on, who've been grappling with my request to think about that term. And at its core, I think there are two reasons to shift from that historical term for these services. One is the impact on the students who receive those services. And the second is the impact on the students who don't receive those services. As board members know, I spent 15 years before coming to Rochester doing research on education and youth development. And I've interviewed students in classrooms where they saw their classmates leave to go receive gifted and talented services that they were not included in. And those students were quite clear that that meant they were not gifted and talented. It is not only problematic for the identity development and academic motivation of those students, but it doesn't reflect the fact that gifts and talents come in many, many forms. I have a stepson who is working away in college right now. He would be the first to say that academic learning is not his love. He is the quintessential kid who can fix anything. And I don't mean just because someone taught him. It's superhuman what Thomas can do with fixing anything mechanical, physical. And it is a way his brain works that if you've ever seen me try and just put together IKEA, you know it is not. But he can do it at high levels with creative problem solving. And yet the term that we are historically using wouldn't speak to that. So one reason is the message it sends to students who don't receive those services. The other, and I think a less appreciated one, is the message that it sends to students who do. The term gifted and talented suggests an innate and inherent ability level that is gifted. And we could have a long philosophical debate about gifted from where. But we do see students, some psychologists have referred to them as the fragile perfects, who think that because I'm so successful, I don't take challenges, I don't push myself, and I certainly can't fail or I'm devastated. And so people can use whatever term they want to. And we were just talking about where I was born. I was born in Chicago but grew up in Minnesota. People in Chicago, when I was a little kid and today still call it the Sears Tower, but it hasn't been the Sears Tower for a very long time.
It's the Sears Tower.
People, people can still, people can still, very good.
It's your tower.
People can still use what terms. But what I'm asking is that the language we use for our programming reflects this term advanced learning. And so what we've historically called our student advancement services, which frankly was an effort to also shift from the term gifted and talented, but I just couldn't understand what student advancement services meant because we want every student to advance. Or our gifted services or GATE will now be referred to as advanced learning services. Our wonderful educators who provide these services, sometimes in the past called GATE teachers or gifted specialists, will be advanced learning specialists. At our elementary level, as you're going to get an overview on, we've called our GATE program would be our elementary advanced learning program. At the middle school level, what we've currently called our middle school highly gifted program will be our middle school advanced learning program. And again, these are shifts in terminology, but not in support for this programming. In fact, it's my hope that a terminology that really describes more accurately the type of academically advanced learning we're providing for students will help us open doors to this programming, grow it, accelerate it, and of course, diversify the number of students that we're privileged to provide it with. And so this is a monitoring item on your agenda, not quite as deep a dive as Erica just gave us with early childhood, but I know it's a subject of interest and concern for board members in the community. And so certainly this can be a down payment on a continuing conversation. And thank you for joining us. And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Pecow, Chair Nathan, board members, cabinet. It's my pleasure to be back here today at this time with Erica Vannevera to provide a brief overview and update of advanced learning services. So we'll start with kind of a rundown of the elementary through high school services. And Erica will kick it off because she's a member of the elementary team.
Hello, I'm a specialist at Franklin, Montessori at Franklin and Bishop. And at the elementary level, we have two service models. We have a talent development push-in model where we teach primary education thinking skills to all first and second grade students. And we also provide small group pullouts, classes for identified third through fifth graders. We have a verbal section where we teach reading, writing, and social studies, and a nonverbal section where we teach math and science. And we also provide math differentiation and acceleration for students who need advanced mathematics. We serve about 3,900 students and have 11 staff on our team.
At the middle school level, there are approximately 600 students who are in the highly gifted program or formerly known as highly gifted program. Students in seventh and eighth grade can select honors option in English, Science, and Social Studies. And there are about 1,300 students that participate in the Rochester accelerated math program or referred to as RAMP. At the high school level, students can select a variety of coursework and offerings. And there are about three staff, one is part-time, who help support those programs at the middle school level and the high school.
Our focus areas are to ensure students from all backgrounds experience advanced thinking skills and deeper learning opportunities, to promote equitable access to advanced academics, and to design school programs and services that are responsive to student needs.
We are committed to increasing representation in advanced programs, and that in our program starts with identification. So on this chart, it shows the demographics of students identified for advanced learning services in grades three through five. Along the left side, you will see the percentages of students identified by race and ethnicity as compared to the district percentages to the right. The goal obviously is to have those two mirror one another with the far right being as close to zero as possible. We do have some work to do in this area. However, the next slide will show our progress over the last three years. This chart shows the increase in the number of students in advanced services for the past three years. We're currently in the middle of an identification season, which is why you don't see 23, 24 as we gear up for portfolios in March. There have been some significant increases, particularly with a 293% increase in our black enrollment in advanced services. This growth can be attributed to using multiple and varied identification practices and assessments, but most specifically, it is through our use of local norms in which we look at data at the school level and within the grade. We use evidence-based practices for identification. All second and fourth graders take the cognitive abilities test or COGAT. We use multiple measures. So not only do we look at standardized tests, but we look at open-ended portfolios. We use school-based norms, which is what I referred to on the previous slide, and then multiple entry points. So we are continually looking at scores and giving opportunities throughout the entire year. Broadening access involves inclusive identification practices. We try to look at the whole child as an individual and not just test scores. We use a combination of assessments and in some cases where prior knowledge isn't even needed. One of our favorite assessments is where the students are presented a concept or something that they learn during the test, and then they immediately apply it right after it. We examine linguistic demands of assessments and use language features when possible. We make sure questions are asset-based so the students are able to use what they know to demonstrate their knowledge. And then specifically on the portfolios, we want them to be able to show their learning in authentic ways that's related to their lived experiences. For our last PD day, our team took a deep dive into intersectionality of diverse learners and giftedness and how talent manifests in culturally, linguistically, and economically diverse students. The left side of this chart shows traits that are typically seen in schools. And sometimes they're called schoolhouse giftedness. It's those students who are test takers or lesson learners. It's those students who are test takers or lesson learners, and their skills are easily measured. On the right side shows examples of an incredible cultural capital that students bring into the classroom, and we don't always assess for these. So our team is starting to look at the process of looking for opportunities for students to bring those literacies, not only into identification practices, but also in our curriculum. Dr. Goldie Mohammed wrote a book called Cultivating Genius, and the idea here is being that educators can cultivate genius in all students. And that is when we nurture their identity, their skills, their intellect, and criticality. And one way that we nurture identity and skills is through our talent development model. And Erica is going to talk about what she does with first and second graders and her new math art project.
Preparing students for advanced coursework begins long before they start secondary school, and talent development is one way that we are helping to cultivate students' strengths and grow their thinking skills. We teach primary education thinking skills to all first and second graders, and that introduces them to flexible thinking and problem solving through hands-on lessons. For example, I just finished teaching my first graders divergent inventive thinking skills, and in the picture you can see some students building a Rube Goldberg machine. One way that I'm helping to provide deeper learning experiences at Franklin is through math art, which combines math concepts with creative self-expression. I was inspired by my former neighbor and Mayo High School graduate, Dr. Juliette Vis, who recently became a full-time artist. And she likes to use her knowledge of computer algorithms and mathematics to create visual representations in her artwork. This is one of Dr. Juliette's pieces. It's called "One, Two, Three, Four," and it's a visual representation of the prime factorization of integers and base 30. And as you can see, the longer you look at the painting, the more patterns emerge. I plan on using this idea with the hundred grid, which every elementary student is familiar with. And my fourth and fifth graders will find the prime factorization of each integer, and then they'll choose colors and shapes to represent the factors. I'm going to be collaborating with our art teacher Tiffany Erie to have the students create their hundred grid on tiles, and they'll paint them with glaze, they'll be fired, and then hopefully, these will be installed by door two at Franklin, so that all students in the building can find patterns within the art piece. There are many benefits to creating math art. It helps to solidify the student's understanding of mathematical concepts, build problem-solving skills, and it helps students to appreciate the real-world applications of math. Next year, we hope to expand this project to the whole building. So every class in the school would create a poster with their own visual representation of the hundred grid, and then these posters would be displayed in the hallway for everyone to see. We would have QR codes next to the posters that you could scan and listen to the students explain their math art. And then the posters would be featured within the 2025 Franklin Art and Talent Show, which you're welcome to attend.
I'll read this to you. So our steps for next year to continue our work is to really continue to look at those identification gaps between the current advanced services enrollment and district demographics, review and adjust assessments and identification protocols for cultural and linguistic responsiveness, and then look for ways to partner with classroom teachers to support math instruction and differentiation within the classroom. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Director Work.
Yeah, I have a comment, and it ties in with Chair Nathan's earlier report from having attended the School Board Convention in January concerning mathematics. And two words have jumped out to me this evening that are, well, it's the same word used twice. And she said it first, "patterns," and you just said the same thing. And being a musician, you know, there are a lot of patterns in music, which is, you know, something that I use a lot. There's a lot of correlation between math and music. I can think of one guy you might have heard, heard his name before, his name was Albert Einstein, who also played the violin. And so this pattern recognition is, can be experienced in a lot of different forms. So I'm really happy to see the connection here that you're making between math and art, although I have no clue what that was about. Okay, prime factorization for each number, and did you say base 30 or something that, yeah, okay. I'll stick with music, I'll stick with music. But I'm seeing that, I'm seeing a lot of possibilities for a lot of integration of all of these skills across the curriculum, and a lot of different ways to reach kids. You know, I was thinking of your stepson, Thomas, you know, and here's a student who's apparently been quite brilliant with learning how to fix things. Send me his phone number, please. I could have a lot of work for him. You know, so reaching kids who are maybe beyond the normal idea of, you know, what school is about. You know, so I'm really looking forward to the art show that you're going to have coming up next year. And the extension of, I guess, this notion that kids have a lot of different interests and abilities, and how do we nurture them? And from what I'm seeing from what you've presented here tonight, that we're doing that pretty well in Rochester. And I'm really hoping to see this, this kind of teaching and understanding increase as we move forward.
Director McLachlan.
I was curious about the primary education thinking skills. That's not something I'd been exposed to before. Can you talk to us about how long you've been doing that, and if you know how long that's been available on RPS?
I've been teaching primary education thinking skills, or PETS, for, this is my sixth year teaching it, and I believe it started three years before I started teaching it. It originally was just for first grade, but we expanded in the last few years to second grade as well. It's divergent, convergent, evaluative, and visual thinking skills, but it's presented to kids in a kid-friendly way, so there's different characters that tie in with each thinking style. So when we're doing our convergent thinking, then we're thinking like Dudley the Detective, and we're looking for clues, and doing problem solvings, things like that. So the one that I just had mentioned before with my first graders, that was with Isabel the inventor. So we practiced different inventive problem solving in order to get them to think in divergent ways. And so we had, we talked about Rube Goldberg machines, we did some different hands-on problem solving on how would somebody pick up a bunch of acorns, how would Isabel the inventor, who's a squirrel, how would she pick up acorns off the ground without using her hands? If we had a bunch of tools to kind of put together a Rube Goldberg machine, or looking at pictures and what could a different picture be, what could a circle be? And just kind of expanding their thinking that way. The evaluative thinking is a lot of metacognition, where they have to think about how they make decisions. So we use Jordan the judge, and how do judges think, where we look at facts and not opinions, and what considerations we need in order to make a decision.
That's awesome. And you talked about the schools you teach at, does it reach the whole district?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Director Cook.
I love the close ties to deeper learning that you underscored. I think this is a phenomenal play. We want deeper learning opportunities throughout the district, but the advanced learning suite of offerings just strikes me as a particularly fertile area to incorporate those concepts. At the elementary level, and I was, I was having visions of the Rube Goldberg machine designs that came home in my house a couple of times. Really, really fun project where, you know, students get to really take ownership in something, and it's very creative. But so at the elementary level and at the high school level, it strikes me that in the AP courses and in the small group format, those are great setups for the kind of deeper learning experience that we love to see. In the middle school, advanced learning services look a little different because the, either whether it's the ramp or the, we're in Minnesota, so we can say formerly known as highly gifted, programming for English or Social Studies and Science. I know for many students, those classrooms feel like accelerated for sure, because the perception is that those students are moving through curriculum that's similar to the other classrooms but at a faster rate. What, if anything, could be done to emphasize the deeper learning potential in the middle school formats in particular?
Well, I would say that we're not necessarily going through the curriculum faster. We might compact the curriculum and go through some of the introductory or background, they might have more background knowledge on certain subjects, but our goal is to go deeper, stay there longer. So that's kind of the philosophy of the middle school program. I think we have tremendous potential to really go further with deeper learning. Our focus hasn't been necessarily to work with the middle school groups this year. Last year, we worked a lot with differentiation, how do we have a low floor, high ceiling? How do we remove the ceiling? So just how are we questioning students and getting them to think in different ways? So we haven't specifically talked about deeper learning. Some things that have been developed this year for middle school is Josh Grossman, our middle school specialist. He has created kind of what you call passion projects, but they're all individual Google classrooms. So he has them created for Science and Social Studies in ELA. So students who might have a particular passion or want to go deeper in a certain area, we have all these side projects, or other areas where students can take a better look at something of interest to them. So in terms of deeper learning, it might look different, but we do have some areas where we're creating opportunities for students to kind of branch out and have their own interests validated.
Just as a really interesting process point, our work on deeper learning right now, as you recall, is what we're calling an innovation initiative. So there's a team in each school and early childhood. We have not yet begun what I think your question, Director Cook, is taking us toward, which is how do we integrate that into the fabric of education across what kids are experiencing? We wanted to start with a team in each school that is bringing it to life. I think that your project that you highlighted here with the PhD in computer science during the art is a beautiful example of deeper learning. We wanted exemplars in every school. The next step, and next year we'll move into measurement of deeper learning, but really the next step is integration across the curriculum, including for all kids. So I think the fact that we haven't started it yet with that middle school programming is actually by design. I'm hoping there's a little bit of pent-up, come on, let's get going, let's get going, let's integrate the framework across content areas. But that really is the work that is the next phase with the deeper learning work.
Director Garcia.
I think you were kind of starting to answer it to Director Cook's point. I appreciate that you're trying to increase the diversity of students that are in the advanced learning services, and I'm wondering how it
Remains inclusive once they're there. So because I, so I had like personal experience in a gifted program when I was younger, and it was, it was difficult because I didn't see myself in that space. And even though I was in a pretty diverse, like racially diverse, socio-economically diverse district, we didn't have, there were more white, rich kids in the group than there were the rest of us. And so there was also like a cultural break in which, like, it was embarrassing to be a smart kid in your cohort. And so there was a lot of like shame. And a lot of the students who were maybe diverse going into it, if they were picked up in like kindergarten or first grade, would maybe not last through like third or fourth grade in the program, even in a pullout like you do with elementary students. And so I guess I'm wondering what efforts are being made, once you get the kids in who are diverse and you're adding them into either these curriculums or these pullout smaller classes, to keep them there in a, like a safer space.
Well, our primary focus has been, right now, to simply think of different ways that we can pull in students by assessing them and validating their cultural literacies. So that would be the next step. What are we doing in our curriculum, in our support systems, to kind of support those students? But also, we're looking at more ways that we are pushing in to classes, so that we're working in partnership with teachers, so that they aren't always pulled out of classes, that we're working within the class, and all students have exposure to some of the things like Erica was saying, through art or through math differentiation, and then our work with PETS. So right now, that is something that we do need to focus on, but right now, it's the identification pieces is what we've started with.
Sure. I think, you know, with like passion projects, that would be easy, because then I, as a student, could just develop what I want to see in a program like that. And I can also recognize that if like the deeper learning content, or maybe accelerated learning content, or you're staying there, you know, more content and longer time, if it's not already culturally responsive, like, you're probably going to lose me, you know, in a couple of years if I get to decide that, like, this doesn't, like, yeah, maybe academically I can keep pace with the other kids here, but like, this doesn't feel like me. And so I don't want other students to get to that place, right? Like, they feel tokenized in that space. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness and inclusion in assessment, and now I'm wondering, and I look forward to hearing more about what that looks like, like, once the kids are actually in the program.
We will look at that. I hadn't thought about that point until you're making it now. We can look at where we are currently in terms of persistence through programming, but it's absolutely something we should have as a goal, for sure. We'll loop back to you on what we see currently.
Excellent, thank you. Director Prada.
What a blessing, you know, to realize that there's an intentionality that's present to where, it's not my saying, but we each probably have heard it, we all do better when we all do better. And the fact that we're able to see that maybe what's been there all the time, but maybe there was not this intentional effort being expended to assess or identify based on metrics other than, well, they're scoring at this high level, so that must mean they are this or that, versus, well, that's not the only metric available to gauge that. I'm glad to see the focus areas which are part of this, which I think are key. And any further comment, I think, in that you're simply presenting this? I'm excited, I'm looking forward to hearing more. Some of what Dr. Garcia has alluded to will be important to get a sense for, and probably nothing other than a exit interview, well, why did you drop the class, or did you not feel welcomed, or whatever. I know I have my own sense of experience based on one of my daughters who was in, who was previously known as gifted, highly gifted, and was not successful, especially, or even at, well, no need to even go in there, looking at what is present, I'm excited. And thank you for the language change, Dr. Pekel, and, but more importantly, the passion. It's not, this isn't a project for you guys. I believe it's really your heart. And Erica, you know, to hear you describe what you're doing, I can only imagine the students who hear that messaging, and then maybe that's the key, for students to be matched with a teacher who cares. And I believe every And I believe every teacher has that capacity to convey that care, and all of our students, as we heard even in our early childhood education experience, that social emotional component is so key. And I'm sure you will do your part to make sure that not only placement occurs in the numbers, that's very exciting to see that, these increases, but the success. Because the goal, I hope, was never to, well, let's, you know, get our numbers up, and, well, we got our numbers up and they didn't handle it. But we have every reason to believe that our students will rise to the occasion, and our staff will fully meet them where they are and inspire them to go even beyond where they may happen to be at this point in time.
I had one other small point. And looking at the focus areas, and I think I maybe skipped over this when you were talking, but I really appreciate the focus on the elementary grades in the data that you provided us. I would really like to see in the future the same data for the second focus point, the promoting equitable access to advanced academics, to see the numbers at the high school level. I don't think there's any reason why all of our students shouldn't be in those advanced courses, and would like to see that increase as we go forward.
Well, thank you for asking that question, because that's where I was going to go. Given that, you know, the high school courses are self-selected, I think it would be important to see some data on some trends. I mean, post-pandemic, are we seeing fewer students selecting some of those advanced learning options in high school, perhaps because they didn't have the same kind of experience or scaffolding in middle school? I think it would be important to see by racial and ethnic group where our students are enrolling in those high school courses. And I think it also might be interesting to talk to some of the students who are selecting these courses in high school, to see what were the middle school experiences that either gave you the confidence or the skills or the experience to want to do those courses in high school, and maybe even from middle school with the elementary, so that we know how our elementary and middle advanced learning experiences are flowing. And then for those students who are choosing to enroll in those high school courses that maybe we've never seen before in an elementary or middle advanced learning course, how did we miss them? And how did they, how did they get there if they didn't go through the pathway? I think that would be interesting to see.
Yeah, those are some of our goals as well. One thing we have started pulling just recently, as I asked to pull, any high school student who has enrolled in any calculus course. So we have data for each high school to see what math courses students are enrolling in. The other thing that we did at the middle school this year, started last year, but this year, every single middle school has honors option for all English, Science, and Social Studies classes, which opens access to many, many more students, because before they were limited based on the schedule, or you could only select one class, or however that would look. So now the access is there more than it has been, so I would be interested in pulling some of that data as well. Thank you.
Director Brala.
And Chair Nathan, to Dr. Marvin, is this, do you envision the possibility of maybe our student school board being asked their input regarding this? I know that's kind of this way, but-
They have opinions about everything. About what?
Well, I'm sure many of them perhaps are taking advantage of the advanced learning services, you know, surveying them, how they got there, how successful they feel, what their observations are. If you give me a few minutes, I can generate the survey. I'm sorry, I won't wait anymore.
No, I think that's a good idea. And I just, a quick question. If students are taking an advanced class in high school, do they have the option of taking it pass/fail? Is that a thing we're doing now or not?
We do have that option.
Julie just said we do.
I think we do. For like, for an elective class.
Personal experience at our household, yes.
Certain classes, yes. Not all classes.
Certain classes, which I think is-
I don't want to say wrong what the, where the line is drawn.
Okay, well, there's that. But anyway, the idea that a student could have that experience, a student who's maybe afraid of lousing up their GPA or whatever, to me, that's a good entree, is just saying, well, try it, you know, and all you have to do is pass, and then you just get the credit and-
Right, right now, we have a six-week trial period for honors classes, some honors classes in high school, so there's six weeks to kind of gauge and figure out if you want to continue in that realm or not. So that's another way that we're having kids test out, test the waters.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
I think, I don't want to take us down a longer, bigger conversation, but I think the point that you just made, Dr. Marvin, about just try it, is actually a really important one and a, what should be a defining feature of our advanced learning services in Rochester, which is that there are many, many onramps, and that the barrier to entry is, of course, we don't want a kid in a class that they absolutely, in that calculus class where they don't have the foundational knowledge, but that when a student wants to try and they are within realm, that door is open. It's not long ago that many schools had either teacher approval, which was highly subjective, or an exam cut score as the precursor to getting in. And as board members know, we are part of a collaborative of school, 12 school districts in the US and Canada that are working with faculty member and staff at Harvard around deeper learning. And one of those districts has been moving on what's called de-tracking, getting rid of any stratification, starting with mathematics. It's been fascinating to hear about. I would not advise that. I believe that we need to meet kids of all academic orientations where they are, and that we need to have no academic low roads. So there can't be any places where kids are not challenged, but that I couldn't play basketball like LeBron James if I tried. And so there are differential abilities. In addition to having no low roads where kids are not challenged, we do need many onramps so that a student who isn't in the pathway can take that chance and try that class. And I'm very pleased that that's a pretty, that's a very defining feature of what we are creating here, and I think we need to keep leaning into that, because when you have a student who, for reasons either of like Dr. Garcia described, their life experience, or simply they didn't have a spark of interest, wants to try to stretch further, we want to have a lot of open doors for that student with the, you know, the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in the class. So that's, I think, something we need to continue to look for, and to provide additional supports for those students who say, yep, I want to stretch further, both inside the class and then through other supports we might provide. So really, really, really important point. One that seems obvious, but as most of us who, especially at the secondary level, know, that is not how the system has worked for decades. It was those kids go with those teachers, and they're in that hermetically sealed bubble. And we want to have it be a permeable opportunity for kids who want to stretch in new ways.
Yeah, I would say, just anecdotally to that comment, that through the program that I was in, it was like a K8, and you were with your own cohort, and you got pulled out of a class, same cohort. So I saw the same kids kindergarten through eighth grade at this particular time and this particular day where we went into sort of our own little like enclave, basically, which was nice. And then we transitioned to high school where it was basically like, there's not really a highly gifted program, you're just kind of in honors or AP or you're not. And so there was no sense of community, but it allowed you to be in class with other students, but then you sort of knew, like, I'm doing more than like the person maybe sitting next to me, and so there's a different level of intensity for you in the class, but there was none of the social support or like community support to continue with that. So I think a lot of students were just sort of like, yeah, I'll try the six weeks of honors, and like, I don't care, I don't want to do all the work, but like I can still stay in the class because they offer like the regular version of that within the same, you know, period time. So I think it's, I mean, it certainly changes, and I would say the more option there is for, like, yes, permeable, but the more option there is for community, I think is so important, particularly for students who are of minoritized identities, and the intersectionality too.
Director McLaughlin. So this, the six-weeks trial period, is that for honors, that's for honors option classes, not honors courses, which are totally different?
Honors option is my understanding.
Okay.
Director McLaughlin.
I just want to circle back to my comment about the equitable access. If we see you again, I would like to hear more about the intentionality of what Dr. Pekel was talking about, inviting those students into that advanced academics. I would give you, my experience from my household is that I have a college freshman now, but in high school, his English teacher said he's ready for honors next year. And it didn't go very well because of teenage angst, but I didn't know that he was ready for that, because I don't see him in the classroom every day, so it was, it was good to see that invite. I would love to see that invite for all kinds of students. I don't know how broad that is. The other feedback I would give from our household, heard, again, he's a college freshman, last week, week before, he said his biggest regret of high school is he didn't do PSEO. So also good feedback to hear, as someone who's now evolved to understand the value of that.
Anything else, board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Invite us to the math, math archive.
Yes, that's going to be so cool. It looks amazing.
Well, it's only fair we gave Erica a hand clap, so we should-
Our next item on the agenda is an action item, 8.1, approval of parameters for development of 2024-2025 budget. I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and if received, will open the floor for discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve reductions in spending of up to $2.5 million in the preparation of the 2024-2025 school year budget, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the use of $7 million of the district's unassigned fund balance in the preparation of the 2024-2025 school year budget.
Move the profile.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I would just add, Chair Nathan, that in addition to the two most relevant action items that we're asking you to approve, we discussed in your study session last week that there are a number of other directives that I believe don't require formal board action, but that we heard loud and clear, including staying very disciplined in new hires and purchases, focusing on the strategic plan when we bring you recommendations for those reductions, using the $10 million gift from Mayo Clinic for two purposes and two purposes only, to avoid increasing class size or closing schools, settling our labor agreements within the parameters that you have approved, and launching a multi-year strategy to strengthen enrollment in Rochester Public Schools. So just wanted to share those broader contextual parameters, goals that you have set in addition to the two that you'll be voting on.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Director Cook.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to clarify, we had a previous discussion about input on the school board budget line item in particular as guidance for the, you know, the next cycle of budget preparation. Is, are those parameters something that is informative to the $2.5 million set of reductions that you are contemplating? I understand it's a relatively, would be a small piece of the puzzle, but those reductions in the anticipated travel budget and so forth, is that, is that what you are viewing as part of the 2.5, or is that something separate in your mind?
I would take your previous conversation as telling me that that should be part of the 2.5, that the school board budget should be a part of that. I think also the other very important piece is that we're going to bring you a cleaned-up school board budget, because as you know, there are some things like our fees to the Chamber of Commerce that are now in the school board budget that really don't directly support you as board members. So in our budget proposal, we will do two things. We will make a recommendation to you for a modest reduction in your very, very modest budget, and then moving some things out of the budget that really are not school board functions but have historically been charged there. So you'll see that in the budget proposal in June.
Good. That was my expectation as well, and I, but wanted to clarify that, so that sounds great to me. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If there's no further discussion, okay, okay. All those in favor of the resolution say aye. All opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item 9.1 is the annual board calendar ABCD updated. The current version of the ABCD is available in this agenda item for reference, and it's in there for every school board meeting. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Hearing none. Item 10.1, board questions and responses. Questions submitted by board members before the meeting and related answers are available in this agenda item. Upcoming board meeting dates, on February 13th at 5:30, we'll have a study session. On February 20th at 5:30, we'll have a regular meeting. On March 19th at 5:30, we will have a regular meeting, and on March 26th at 5:30, we will have a study session. If you're wondering why we're skipping the first meeting in March, it is because it is the presidential primary. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:53 PM.